Good evening and welcome to the regular scheduled San Bruno City Council meeting of November the eighth, two thousand and twenty-two. We've called the meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Hamilton Medina.
Here. Thank you very much. I would ask us all to rise for the pledge of allegiance. And I would ask if Lori Greenberg could lead us this evening. Thank you, Lori. Now we'll move on to item four, public comments for items not on the agenda. Individuals be advised, council from acting on or discussing any item not agendized pursuant to state law. Do we have any members of the public, both here in person or via Zoom?
I do not have any speaker cards. I have no hands raised.
Is there anybody, just to make sure that there's nobody here in the audience? Okay. With that, we will move on to item number five. Announcements and presentation. The first item is item A. The San Bruno City Council will hold a special meeting on November the fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two at six P. M. to provide a public hearing on the proposal to increase solid waste rates. This meeting will be held here at the San Bruno Senior Center. And if there's any more information, you can certainly ask to staff. Next, item B, and then I'll ask at the end of all the presentations if anybody from the public wishes to speak. Item B, proclamation declaring November twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-two, a small business Saturday in the city of San Bruno. There's proclamation declaring November the twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-two, a small business Saturday in the city of San Bruno, whereas in the city of San Bruno celebrates our local small businesses and contributes they make to our local economy and community. And whereas, according to the United States Small Business Administration, there are thirty-two point five million small businesses in the U. S. Small businesses represent ninety-nine point seven of firms with paid employees. Small businesses are responsible for sixty-two percent of net new jobs created since nineteen ninety-five, and small businesses employ forty-six point eight percent of the employees in the private sector in the United States. And whereas the city of San Bruno supports our local businesses that create jobs, boosts our local economy, and preserve our communities. And whereas advocacy groups, as well as public and private organizations across the country, have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving, a small business Saturday. Now therefore, I Rico E. Medina, Mayor of the city of San Bruno, do hereby proclaim November twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-two, a small business day. With that, we will move on to a, you know what I'm going to do? I'm going to take D first and just read that announcement. There will be a Veterans Day observance at Golden Gate National Cemetery, which is located at thirteen hundred Sneed Lane on Veterans Way on Friday, November the eleventh, two thousand and twenty-two, at eleven A. M. to honor our veterans with the band concert beginning at ten thirty, presented by the Avenue of Flags Committee. And now we will move on to item C. We're going to adopt a resolution for David Nigel as the two thousand and twenty recipient of the recognition of the extraordinary service award and adopt a resolution honoring Dennis Sammett as the two thousand and twenty-one recipient of the recognition of extraordinary service award. And with that, I would like to turn it over to the Community Services Director. Can you, I'm sorry, Director. Hold on. Real quick.
Well, that would help. But should I start over? Are we good?
If you could, please, just for the audience. Thank you.
So this evening, I'm introducing this item honoring two recipients of San Bruno's extraordinary service award. In two thousand and twenty, the city received a nomination from the Rotary Club of San Bruno and San Bruno Lions Club for this award for longtime San Bruno resident, David Nigel. Our recognition subcommittee is comprised of six city commissioners, and they convened this past July to review these nominations. The committee members included Culture and Arts Commissioners Pamela Madden and Jean George, Parks and Rec Commissioners Mike Palmer and Tom Kuhn, and Planning Commissioners Marco DeRazzo and Gerard Madden. There will be a more formal ceremony in about a couple of months once by the tennis courts. And at that location, we'll more publicly and formally acknowledge and celebrate the contributions of these two community members. Tonight, staff is recommending that council adopt the resolutions awarding the recognition to these two men. And Commissioners Mike Palmer and Marco DeRazzo are here this evening to present the award nominees to council.
Mr. Palmer.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Medina and members of the city council, city of San Bruno's extraordinary service award. Joining me at the podium tonight is Marco DeRazzo from the Planning Commission. I will be presenting the recommendation for David Nigel to be the two thousand and twenty recipient of the city's extraordinary service award. And Mr. DeRazzo will be presenting the recommendation for Dennis Sammett to be the two thousand and twenties of both of these gentlemen. With the council's permission, I would like to add a couple of brief comments about David Nigel. In addition to everything contained in Director Matola's staff report, Mr. Nigel has selflessly donated an extraordinary amount of time to many different organizations as a mentor and teacher. Most of this time was in the field of sports and recreation. Earlier this year, the California Association of Parks and Recreation Commissioners and Board Members named its annual scholarship in his honor. It is now the David Nigel Scholarship. On behalf of my colleagues on the Memorial Recognition Subcommittee, it is truly my honor and privilege to be able to recommend to the city. Sir DeRazzo will say a few words about Dennis Sammett.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. As a resident of San Bruno, I'm honored to be, was a civic-minded business owner. He served on various committees, helped develop San Bruno's seventy-fifth anniversary guide, and served on the Centennial Anniversary Committee. His involvement and support of various Lions activities is exhaustive. Posey Parade, Holiday Food Baskets, Operation of Santa Claus are just a few that I have time to highlight tonight. The Lions could not have had the same impact and served as many families in our community without his support. Really ask that you move to support recognition in his honor tonight. Thank you.
Thank you for your time tonight. Thank you both, Mr. DeRazzo and Mr. Palmer. At this time, are there any members of the public that wish to speak on this item? This is going to be an action item by the council. And I also will ask if there are any council comments prior to the vote. But any members of the public? So, hold on. No other members in the audience and no other on Zoom? Okay. With that said, comments from colleagues in regards to the two resolutions? Councilmember Salazar.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to say that it is good to see this program. Very happy to support this.
Thank you. Other question, other comments from colleagues? Vice Mayor Mason.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that one thing that was not mentioned by Mr. Sammett and by Mr. DeRazzo is that what I found really interesting and commendable about Mr. Sammett, whom I don't know and did not know, is that every time I would speak with one of their employees, he is loved and respected by his employees. When the pandemic came and they closed, their employees continued to receive benefits and he continued to pay those benefits. They have one of the highest retention rates, one of the largest, they're actually one of the largest employers in San Bruno. And as a planning commissioner, I approved the back addition to Artichoke Joe's, which was requested not because they wanted to expand their gambling, it was because they wanted to give staff in the kitchen more space to be able to cook. And so I don't think you can find somebody who's willing to invest in their staff in that way more commendable. And then for Mr. Nigel, I don't think I've ever met anybody who had an ill word to say about Mr. Nigel. So I am in concurrence with Councilmember Salazar. I don't think you could find two more commendable people to receive this award. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Medina.
I just think it's fantastic that we're back to honoring some of, some of our members of our community. And you couldn't do, what a great, great time to start with Dennis Sammett and Mr. Nigel. I think it's just fantastic. So I'm really glad we're doing this and providing that honor. Thank you.
Thank you. And I do appreciate this coming back. It's been a while, but obviously COVID has prohibited us from coming together and acknowledging and honoring our residents and people that have truly given back for decades. And what's more impressive is that not only has, i.e. with Mr. Nigel, fifty-two years, maybe fifty-three, on the Park and Rec Commission, maybe fifty-four, but it's truly just not here in San Bruno, it's throughout the state. It's throughout the county. He's very proud of the scholarship program and the engagement and the involvement he has in this community, going to the events and sharing his wisdom and knowledge and his love and his passion. And with Mr. Sammett, there are so many other things that aren't said because they can't be said, because he just did it, and he didn't want a plaque, he didn't want to be acknowledged. It just happened. When there was a need that arose, whether it was after the explosion or anywhere in between then and now, the Sammett family and Dennis Sammett himself have been there for this community. When I worked in Parks and Rec, the lights we have at Diamond Three are thanks to him. And there's many other things in this community, but like I said, it wasn't always to get an accolade, it was just to give back and to do the right thing. So with that, I think this is one thing tonight that all that sit up here and with Mr. Hamilton will be in concurrence to. This is a good thing and a right thing. With that, I'd like to take each resolution separate. And first, I'd like to start with the resolution honoring David Nigel and Councilmember Hamilton.
Thank you very much. I'm very, very happy to make, make this motion, given all of Mr. Nigel's contributions to the city of San Bruno, which are legendary. And I concur with every kind comment said here tonight about both him and about Mr. Sammett. So I would like to make a motion to adopt a resolution honoring David Nigel as the two thousand and twenty recipient of the recognition of extraordinary service award.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion, Hamilton, second, Salazar. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? It is unanimous. The resolution has been approved and adopted. So congratulations, Mr. Nigel. And at this time, I understand, though he may be, believe it or not, not here in this room, but he still is here, and he is via Zoom, and we'd like to bring him in at this time.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hello? Okay. I lost my picture. So I'm very humbled and honored to receive this special award. I'm three thousand miles away in Husatonic, Massachusetts, with lifelong friends. And they're all listening, and they were all smiling. And I'm so honored. I love San Bruno. And I'm, I'm not looking for the recognition, but receiving it is really special to me. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you, Dave. And, and, and thank you for all that you've done. And I can remember even being on staff, and you are Park and Rec Commissioner. And you are one person that treats everyone with kindness, compassion, and support. And I've known you for decades, and I've been honored to know you and see all that you've given to our community. So once again, I would like to have action on the next resolution honoring Dennis Sammett. I'll go ahead and move to introduce the resolution honoring Dennis Sammett.
Second.
Motion Rico Medina seconded Salazar. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carried. Five oh. Resolution has been adopted. Mr. Sammett is now the two thousand and twenty. Mr. DeRazo, Mr. Palmer, for being here and your words. I want to thank also other Danielle and Chris and Stephen and Lori that are here also. And announcements. Thank you very much. You don't have to stay. You can go watch the results. All items are considered routine or implemented at an earlier council comment. Period for all items in this section unless a council member requests to pull an item for a separate vote.
Kate, please.
Need to have comments. We'll see another. I want to make note for the record, being recusing the conflict because it is the behavior to execute an agreement with T. J. K. M. transfer.
A couple of ones that we are being asked.
Can you talk about this? Can you talk about the two pots of money we're funding this from, the salary savings and the?
I have three questions. So the second one is just, we're approving the contract from?
To answer all three questions. So we will be approving the contract moving forward for the upcoming year, Season Traffic Engineering Consultants. One is from the salary savings from the vacancies that we currently have for the position that we have been unable to fill for the past two and a half to three years. And the second pot of funds is from the professional services budget that we have within our department.
Okay. But there is an existing contract then, because I can't remember back to two thousand and twenty, to be honest.
It's ending, and so we're trying to renew, to have a new contract going forward.
Okay, understood. Thank you. And then the last question is just, can you, or the city manager, share what efforts have been made to hire for this position over the last two years?
Yeah. So we've put out a variety of recruitments for the week with recruiters to see if they can help us. At the last budget, at the last budget cycle, we requested to upgrade the position from an associate engineer to a senior engineer to try to attract a more qualified seasoned candidate. And we are currently going through the recruitment process itself for the position. And we are hopeful that we may be able to get a viable candidate out of that, out of that recruitment.
And are you posting outside of, like, CalOps, or is it just on CalOps?
Oh, no, we're posting, we're posting in various, unfortunately, that's not enough at the moment, but we're hopeful through this round of recruitment that we might come up with a viable candidate.
Okay. Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you.
Any questions from colleagues in regards to, with the understanding that I will be recusing myself from item F? Is there any action from council?
Through the chair.
Oh, wait, wait. Sorry, Salazar. Mr. Salazar. Is there any public comments?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Five zero, unanimous items on the consent through J to be approved with the recusal by Rico Medina on F. Now we'll move to item K, adopt a resolution approving cost of living adjustment COLAs for the unrepresented assistant city manager position of six percent in calendar year two thousand and twenty-two and three percent in calendar year two thousand and twenty-three.
The title, which is regarding a cost of living increase, adjustment increase, not a cost of living increase. So my first question, new item tonight. So.
City attorney.
The agenda title is appropriate, blah, but it also clearly says that the city council will be considering a six percent increase. I think the use of the term COLA, public adequate notice, to, if they wanted to come speak about the potential increase to the ACM salary.
I'd recommend changing the reference to COLA, which is an abbreviation for cost of living, to inflationary percent, if increase, that will be.
Been approved for the COLA increase, the salary would be receiving.
COLA and salary represented positions receive salary increases. Some do know that when countly used, given because of age increase.
Decision tonight, if approved.
Only include a salary increase.
Thank you. And then the standard twelve dollars as of tonight.
Of the classification, was the salary twenty-two, three would be two hundred and forty-seven thousand. There is a close session.
For negotiator?
The city manager.
Thank you.
I is.
I don't, I believe it's required by law, right, that we're, as I understand it from the government.
Think.
Mayor Mason, this isn't that you're referring to session for you to approve it before the council.
So provided, two times, two times that it happened, that it happened, we are now changing that practice tonight.
So I just, but the six percent increase would be approved to nine one twelve. The public understands that. I feel very, for a position, voting no on this.
Oh, I'm sorry. Vice Mayor.
Growth increases. So I.
No hands raised.
This topic. And is there any further comments or?
Being that we did have consensus in close, when it was filled, was, was provided in close.
Second.
Motion Salazar, second.
Was provided in close.
Second.
Motion Salazar, second. Marty Medina, Mason, no.
Sorry.
First item, conduct of business.
For fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two to twenty-three, as of September thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two, and adopt a resolution approving the carryover of fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two to twenty-three purchase order encumbrances and fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two to twenty-three budget amendments.
Thank you very much. What we're going to do is hear from the interim finance director, go through the whole presentation. We'll bring it to colleagues for questions on the presentation, then I'll ask for any public input. And then we will bring it back to council for further discussion, deliberation, and our action. Interim Finance Director.
Thank you and good evening, Mayor Medina and members of the council. Bobby McGee, the city's interim finance director. Can we get that presentation back up on the screen? There we are. Tonight's objective is for the council to receive the first quarter financial update report as of September thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two, and to adopt a resolution amending the operating and capital improvement budget by approving the carryover purchase order encumbrances, as well as some recommended budget adjustments through the first quarter. On the agenda tonight is the financial update for the general fund, the enterprise fund, additional budget amendments, which have been requested by departments and recommended tonight, and then finally, a request for action to the city council. And so just an overview of the adopted general fund budget. The revenues were slightly outpaced by the expenditures during the budget hearings, objects, and one-time monies that were authorized by the council at that time. The general fund revenues so far, I'll draw your attention specifically to that center column there. I recognize a couple of these slides are fairly busy. But the revenues are currently pacing about where we would expect at this time during the year. As the council knows, revenues tend to not come in on, on an equal basis each month. Revenues come in at different times during the year. And so typically in the first quarter, somewhere between sixteen and twenty percent, which you'll see between last year and this year, that's very common. That is about what we would expect after year. Again, if you'll take a look at that center column there, currently, we're at about thirty-two percent of budget expenditures for this year. That's exactly where we were last year. Very common to see those types of numbers after the first quarter. And the enterprise funds, in a similar fashion, they are also tracking according to budget. We don't have any significant concerns at this time on the general fund expenditures, nor the enterprise funds. Each one of the enterprise funds are listed there, water, wastewater, city net, and stormwater. And as you will see, these, these items are all tracking right to budget, exactly about what we would expect at this time during the year. Internal service funds, including the central garage, building and facilities maintenance, self-insurance, and technology, once again, tracking right on pace. This is good news for us. Everything we've seen across the board is pretty much what we would expect at this time during the year. Again, I'll draw your attention to the percentage of budget. Those are numbers that, among each one of these funds, we would expect to see at this time during the year. And so a highlight on the, on the first quarter actuals. So the general fund revenue receipts are actually a little bit higher than the previous year, while, as I mentioned, the expenditures are consistent with what happened last year. So whether the general fund revenues continue to come in at a higher rate is unknown at this time. I can tell you is, is there has been a little bit of an increase when we compared last year's first quarter to this year's first quarter. And so we'll have a little bit better understanding of where the city's revenues will be when we come back with the mid-year report. The water and wastewater funds are very consistent with the previous year. The one thing that we have noticed is that city net revenue has decreased a little bit, primarily due to a shrinking customer base. And there was a service downgrade of customers who were delinquent on their accounts and, and may have dropped down to a lower-priced plan. Insurance premiums on, across the board, for, for all of the city's insurance premiums have been increasing over the last few years. And we do expect that trend to continue. That is something that, that everyone's, all cities, I should say, statewide are, are experiencing as insurance costs continue to rise exponentially. The next couple of slides are specific to the carryover purchase order encumbrances. This is an action that we're asking the council to take. All of these items that are listed within these funds that you see on the screen here, were previously approved by the council, items that were previously approved by the council, but for various reasons, the projects are still in progress, or, or other types of circumstances, similar circumstances that require the, the money to be encumbered and, and approved by the council tonight, moving forward. The forty-six million dollars that you see there, Recreation and Aquatic Center, that was approved. And so you'll notice on this slide here, the facilities maintenance, facilities, I'm sorry, facilities capital fund carries the, the majority of that, of that forty-six million dollars. There are some recommended budget amendments for the first quarter, and I'll walk you through each one of these. So the first request is for thirty-three thousand dollars, which is for increased expenditures for a lawnet messaging switch. We've been working with the police department, as well as the city's IT department, on this switch. The switch is fairly old at this point. In discussions with the IT, the switch that, that helps the, the police department communicate with other agencies, is going to fail at some point, and now would be an appropriate time to, to order a new switch and get that item in the queue so that, you know, somewhere between eighteen and twenty-four months from now, we would have an upgraded technology. The second and third item for seven hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars is actually, the best way I can term this is, it's an accounting thing. So what this item is, is currently, the city receives funds from developers for plan check services, and it's seen as a pass-through item, where the money is taken in by the city and immediately passed off onto a third party to provide the plan check services. This is something that when I first arrived here a few months ago, the previous finance director had flagged, and, and I tend to agree with her, that a, a more transparent director had flagged, and, and I tend to agree with her, that a, a more transparent way to do this would be for the city to actually receive the money and then pay the money out. So if that in, if, in the future, any specific or given transaction, somebody wanted to research it, it would be easier for them to find. So really, this is just an accounting function. These activities are happening right now. The city is currently handling this money and paying the developers out. And so the request is to allow us to actually receive the money. It hits the city's books and then pay it out of the city's books. So there's no change in, in level of effort. It's really just a change in, in the way the accounting is handled for that. The $26,000 in general fund money for the library system is for self-checkout machines and security gates. There is $42,000 is being recommended for expenditures related to bulletproof vests for the police department. These are required as part of the MOU, and what I will say is that the city has received a grant to partially offset some of these costs, and so now would be an appropriate time to, to consider the additional $42,000. That is not coming from the general, even though it's treated as a general fund dollar, I, I will highlight that that is not, we're not requesting that comes out of the general fund reserve. That would actually be coming out of the equipment reserves, so money that's already been set aside for these types of activities. And the final item on here that's being recommended is $100,000. So this side, the slide is a summary. In, in summary, the general fund here, the net impact to the general fund, as you can see, is actually only about $60,000, because the, the other money that is related to the accounting transaction is currently being received. We're just putting this on the books now. That's, that's kind of the point between, behind that, the way that is presented there. Equipment reserves is the $42,000. And so the recommendation to council is to receive the first quarter financial update report, and then adopt a resolution amending the operating capital budgets by approving the carryover purchase order encumbrances and the recommended budget amendments that I just walked you through. And with that, I would like to take forth a significant amount of effort in, in creating these figures and numbers, and especially to Esther Gerbe Fernandez, who assisted me with putting the report and the, the staff report and the, and the council memo together. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
Thank you very much for the report.
Regarding the request for $100,000 for the, the landscape architect from the diff for that project, it's coming from the, paid those dollars. So I'm a little concerned that we're starting to spend some of that without having had, I did want to say, a concern there that, you know, we, how all of this is going to.
Question, more of a statement, and look at the whole global picture and.
Item. That, is this a?
Sure. An impact fees, right? An impact fees to take a look in. The object is go fields, walking trails, et cetera, will be, and that process takes some time. And so there will be directed to come from the community facilities impact fee portion of diffs, which does it the, not advancing or loaning funds were, was bucket for that. But it's being done so that one of the goals is to ensure that we had other general fund monies to please. If council wants to fund it from the general fund, we could certainly fund that fees to spend from that, from that fund now was.
Or with, that we will be tracking this, and we'll have.
In early '23, knowing that there's a lot of work to, to happen around.
Thank you for the presentation. I said a $26,000, there's a self-checkout and machine and security gates. I'm, I'm a little, the need is, because I feel like the library, when we talk.
Sure, thank you, Mayor Medina and Vice Mayor Mason. So the way that these requests, this report, to, to send those up for consideration, and so there's a number of people that look at these types of things and decide whether the, the department head, who's making the request, a number of different people. True requests, but what I can tell you is, is for the first quarter request, this is the item that was received, and it is being recommended to be funded fully.
Thank you. And then the second is just really a question for clarification. It's a mechanism as opposed to, are we being asked to actually expend additional dollars?
Thank you. Yes, this is an accounting mechanism, is really all this expenditure, expending the money in order to be more transparent with what we're doing. We would need appropriation authority to make that accounting adjustment. It's really just an accounting thing. There is no additional expenditures, there is no additional revenue. All of these activities are currently happening. It's just a mechanism that we're asking to change.
To the question regarding the, the development impact fees and, and the discussion after that, those were, those were most of my questions, but then I, I've now come up with a new one, which is put the city in any jeopardy, given that one of, one of the items is related to Gressmore, from which I am accused.
I think I need the.
So under budget.
So if, if we could come back to that, I'm going to just do some research.
The other, my other ones have been covered. Thank you.
I do not have any speaker card.
I had that the six occasion around that, because I can see one-time fees to result in, in a.
Happy to. So of why this was outpaced the ex of a small amount of generalers. That was related specifically to a, a number of, to, to what you see with the encumbrances. There's a lot of projects that the city is trying to send, is, is, there's not a long-term. Thank you.
Any other comments or discussion from colleagues?
Really happy to just abstain from this item if there's some certainty.
Yeah. Also, Member Hamilton, I was just going to request out of an abundance of caution to recommend the whole item.
Okay. Mike and your camera.
Sure.
Thank you very much. This is a.
Action approving the carryover.
Salazar, seconded, Marty Medina, we're going to do.
Vice Mayor Mason.
Aye.
Mayor Rico Medina.
Aye.
With note that Councilmember Hamilton.
Rejoin us. Thank you for.
Authorizing the creation of a parking fund, authorizing transfer of $331,000 from the downtown parking program, capital improvement project into the parking fund, to parking enforcement, following the conclusion of the meet and confer process for the memorandum of understanding entered into between police and the city.
And Chief, if you could hold on, I'm going to ask the city manager first, please.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor Rico Medina and Council, Javon Grogan, city manager. I'll just give a very quick introduction. We're, we're really happy to bring you both an update on the city's efforts to move forward with installing parking meters, and also tonight, respond to your, your request to look into splitting the project and having a phase one, so we can increase our parking enforcement operations. And so tonight here, we have the chief of police, Ryan Johansson, to provide an update. And there's also a recommendation to move forward with phase one and enter into a contract with Laz Parking. Just know that we are here tonight to provide you with information. We're happy to answer any questions that you have, and certainly, there are a number of alternatives in the staff report, that if the, the city council would like us to align phase one with phase two, and increase parking enforcement when we do the meter program, we're, we're happy to do that as well. But with that, I'll turn it over to Chief Johansson.
Listening at home and here in the room. My name is Ryan Johansson. I'm the chief of police here in the city of San Bruno. And as city manager Javon Grogan mentioned, I'm here tonight to present to you a bit of an update on a project that has been underway for quite some time, in, in enhancing parking enforcement citywide, and looking at a metered parking program for downtown. In terms of the agenda, I will begin by providing a little, a little bit of background information. As previously stated, the project has been underway in a variety of forms for quite some time. So I'd like to set some context there with background. We will then have a discussion of the potential partnership with Laz Parking that we're presenting to you as part of phase one this evening. We will discuss the fiscal impact of not only that phase one, but also the incorporation of phase two, and how the two work together. And then finally, some recommendations and alternatives, and of course, some time to take questions. In terms of the background, this all sort of kicked off in January of 2019 with the San Bruno Downtown Parking Study, and emerged with a final parking management plan. That is still available through the city's website, and I've placed the link here on this slide. The key takeaway is pertinent to our conversation this evening from that, where that business owners and residents find the current conditions in the downtown corridor regarding parking unacceptable. The parking issues at that time were intensifying, and I think most of us, at least anecdotally, would agree they've continued to intensify since then. And quite frankly, the parking demand exceeds the supply is the core of the issue experienced by merchants and residents alike. The relevant recommendations from that report were that there should be increased enforcement, especially in the heavy use evening period, and we will talk about some of the difficulties with that based on current models. Also, the installation of parking meters for short-term zones, and that was all about creating some parking turnover that is to the benefit of merchants who are trying to move customers in and out of the business throughout the day. Also, to route longer-term parkers into our many lots in the downtown corridor, to improve signage in order to help drivers locate available parking as they're attempting to patron businesses downtown, and to formalize overnight parking arrangements in public lots for residents in order to expand the available parking for folks who actually live within this area. In fiscal year 2021, council actually took this report and sort of utilized it to establish a strategic initiative surrounding what we're discussing this evening. Specifically. This project was then undertaken by the police department in late 2021. This made a lot of sense because the police department obviously was already responsible for parking enforcement, and so any solution implemented would obviously involve and need to be integrated with existing police operations. Also, effective parking enforcement was identified early on as being essential to effective metering. So it seemed appropriate to join sort of the two separate components of this project, and were intimately involved in the other two components of this, this process. And at that time, we really established two different phases to the program, the first being the effort to enhance citywide parking enforcement, and the second being to install meters and wayfinding signage in the, specifically in the downtown corridor. So why did we put enhanced parking enforcement in phase one? Well, first, it was largely based upon your requests and feedback to staff. We were asked, how can we improve parking through enhanced enforcement in the immediate, as quickly as possible, knowing that installing meters is something that will take some time, both from staff and from potential partner, contract partners? And so what could be done in the immediate is a question that was asked. I think we can also all agree that there were longstanding public complaints about parking in this area. And there is also an underlying belief that more consistent enforcement would improve those parking complaints or the problems that underlie them. We also were receiving a number of new enforcement requests in the past couple of years, including a focus on blocked sidewalks to create greater access for pedestrians, folks using wheelchairs and strollers, as, and also expansion of our existing street sweeping enforcement to citywide, and also some interest in wrong-way parking enforcement. So some violations that historically were not thoroughly enforced by the police department, and, and there were some asks to begin doing so. Additionally, metering will only work with adequate enforcement. If you install meters and you don't enforce the need to pay them, people will quickly learn that they can park without paying, and then the revenues and the benefits we assume to realize from metered parking will quickly disappear. And so it seemed appropriate to establish adequate enforcement in advance of installing meters so that we're able to hit the ground running. Additionally, permit parking only works with adequate enforcement as well, for the same reasons previously cited regarding metering. And none of this can be achieved with current police department staffing and operational capabilities. And so that played into why we decided to put enforcement into phase one rather than the meter installation. In March of 2022, there was a staff report delivered by Lieutenant Gene Wong from the police department to city council, providing really just kind of an overall update on staff's progress regarding the two phases of this project. It also highlighted some of the challenges and limitations to our existing enforcement efforts, which I will, I will go over again this evening. Those were limited staffing, legal restrictions, which there has been some development in, and I will discuss shortly, and some technological limitations in terms of the current technology possessed and the more applicable technology to proper enforcement. And at that time, we did notice staff, notice council, I'm sorry, of staff's intention to ultimately recommend some sort of contracted partnership for enforcement services, which is why I'm in front of you this evening. In November of 2021, and in March of 2020, 2022, I'm sorry, we also held meetings with Down, a downtown merchants focus group. The idea here was to begin sort of discussing the idea of meters and increased enforcement downtown and get a better feel for how the merchants in that area felt about it. We discussed both enhancement, enhanced enforcement and the metering program with overwhelming support from this group for both of those initiatives. They were very clear that timed parking enforcement is essential to their effective operations. They need parking turnover in the downtown corridor in order to ensure that they can get enough customers through the business throughout the day to be profitable, quite frankly. And in addition, in an effort to serve the community, it's, we've all probably experienced the difficulty of going to one of our favorite downtown businesses, only to be frustrated by the lack of available parking, and maybe in some cases, to find an alternative. And so there was a great deal of interest from the merchants in doing whatever we can to eliminate that from happening. Some of the key questions that came from the merchants at that time were about parking for owners of businesses and their employees. This is something that will certainly be part of what we bring back to council as we discuss policy and a potential ordinance surrounding metering downtown. They also discussed the desire for increased loading zones and questions about how their deliveries would get to the businesses if everything was metered. So these are all things that will need to ultimately be addressed as we move into phase two. In terms of these existing enforcement challenges, because the simple question, if we talk about the possibility that increased or more adequate enforcement could improve these problems in the downtown corridors, why don't you just do more enforcement? And I really, truly wish it was that simple, but one of the major hindrances to that is simply limited staffing. There are currently two full-time and three-part-time CSOs in the general fund budget for the police department to handle all parking enforcement activities citywide. So any kind of parking enforcement that needs to be conducted all over the city of San Bruno is to be conducted by these two full-time and three-part-time individuals. And I think that past practice will show us that just enforcing parking adequately in the downtown corridor could take that many personnel quite easily. Generally, there is no community service officer coverage after 2:30 PM each day. And as I earlier mentioned, that 2019 study made it clear that we need increased enforcement in the impacted evening hours, and currently, we do not even have staff here to conduct that enforcement. Additionally, CSOs are critical for other police department operations. It's not simply that they can go out and enforce parking all day long. We rely on them heavily to provide other critical services to this community, including taking cold crime reports. This means crime reports that do not involve suspect information and do not require a high level of investigation, but are primarily documentary in nature. They handle non-injury traffic collisions, which is a service we've continued to provide in San Bruno, while most cities have moved away from providing that to their community members. I think it's an important service because for those of us who've been in a collision, even non-injury, we know that it can be quite stressful and can create a lot of liability in the backend, and I think there's a high level of comfort when a police officer shows up and helps to conduct an investigation. Our CSOs help with that. They also provide critical property and evidence transport for us, fleet maintenance, traffic control, and a number of other very, very important activities for the police department. So then that may beg the question, why not just hire more CSOs? And again, I wish it was that simple as well. Consistently staffing our existing CSO positions has proven to be extremely difficult. There are a number of reasons for this. One is certainly the waning interest in law enforcement in general over the last few years. Typically, these positions are staffed by aspiring police officers and/or dispatchers who are either not old enough to be police officers yet, or do not meet the education requirements, or trying to finish their school first, and so they will come accept a position as a CSO while they're working towards that end. And with the waning interest in law enforcement in general, there obviously are fewer people interested in those early stepping stones to that career. Additionally, these positions require mandatory background checks, and this is because they are accessing a CLET system that enables them to run registration on vehicles and other critical records, and not everyone is able to pass those background checks. So we're taking the potential pool of candidates for this job down even further. And then compensation levels are always a challenge. The CSOs are, are not compensated commensurate with many of the other agencies in our area, and so it's competitive and difficult to attract them here. One of the other challenges with existing enforcement is legal restrictions, and we've talked about this a number of times at prior meetings. I think council and the public's probably heard me talk many times about the Sixth Circuit Court decision in 2019 that essentially put us on notice that we can no longer chalk the tires of cars. This was extremely relevant in San Bruno because that's the methodology we relied upon to conduct all of our timed parking enforcement here. So whether it's a two-hour zone downtown, a five-hour lot downtown, or a 72-hour abandoned vehicle ordinance, the way that we were documenting what needed to be in place to conduct that enforcement is using chalk on tires. And the Sixth Circuit put us on notice that they believed that to be a Fourth Amendment search, and that that search needed to be supported by legal process. There were lawsuits in San Francisco and San Leandro, just to name a couple, in 2021 regarding continuing to chalk despite this notice from the Sixth Circuit. And here in San Bruno, in an abundance of caution, we halted nearly all of our timed parking enforcement in response to this potential liability. Now, I will say that very recently, there was a Ninth Circuit ruling, and the Ninth Circuit has jurisdiction over us, not the Sixth Circuit, that contradicts this Sixth Circuit ruling. The Ninth Circuit essentially ruled that, yes, this is a search under the Fourth Amendment, but that that search qualifies for exception to the search warrant requirement, because it is administrative in nature and involves a vehicle, which is a mobile. Uh, because it is administrative in nature and involves a vehicle, which is a mobile conveyance. And so without getting in depth into the case law that stands behind it. Uh, we are currently left in a state of limbo as to which circuit court would prevail if we were called on the carpet, so to speak, for continuing to chalk tires. So my recommendation at this point in time is to take no action and to continue not chalking tires until we get greater clarity. Uh, because I don't want to expose the city to a needed liability. And then we have technology needs. Automated license plate readers are quite frankly essential for efficient and effective parking enforcement. Um, they are completely required for timed parking enforcement, in my opinion, based largely upon the fact that we're not supposed to be chalking tires. Um, they're also required for metering enforcement, especially in a plan like ours where we plan to meter based upon license plates, not based upon parking stalls. And so you need to have some sort of a system to catalog who has and has not, uh, paid. And to look at license plates as a way to determine where you will conduct enforcement. They're also far more efficient than conventional methods for almost all other forms of parking enforcement, including permit parking. You can imagine driving down the street in a vehicle and attempting to look on the rear bumper or in the rear, uh, windshield to see if there's a parking permit. As opposed to a license plate reader automatically reading plates as you go down the street and immediately notifying a CSO. As to the presence of a plate that is not currently permitted, far, far more efficient. Same thing with restricted zones. This allows, as I just sort of described, drive by enforcement, which makes it much more efficient and much more effective. Additionally, ALPR technology integrates with our existing enforcement platforms, so our digital citation issuing platform. Our backend CAD and RMS systems that track these citations. And presently, the San Bruno Police Department does not have any ALPR enforcement capabilities. So with all that said, what does current enforcement actually look like? Well, we spend a great deal of our time on street sweeping. We do selected areas based upon the needs conveyed by public works. Uh, this time of year, for example, as we head into the rainy season, we have to double up the personnel assigned to street sweeping. Because clearing out the drains is very, very important for flood management. Um, this is actually quite a large undertaking. It requires two CSOs, about two thirds of their work time is strictly handling street sweeping enforcement to support the street sweeping efforts of the city. Abandoned vehicle abatement is another huge time suck. Uh, the reality is, I reported prior to council on this, is that there's a high volume of reports of abandoned vehicles. Or what is commonly referred to as a seventy two hour ordinance, but a very low level of enforcement. Because only about eleven percent of those vehicles are actually in violation of being abandoned and needing to be enforced. So a tremendous amount of time is spent by CSOs going out and responding to allegations that vehicles are abandoned or parked illegally in this regard. Most of those complaints tend to be, uh, people who are upset about vehicles parked in front of their home that they wish were not there. And so they report them as abandoned when they are not in fact abandoned. Additionally, we spend a lot of time on registration violations because if we don't enforce it, nobody will. Uh, that means ticketing vehicles with expired registration and towing those that are expired more than six months. Uh, we spend a, a significant amount of time on, uh, blocked driveways, other vehicle hazard reports like double parking and sign violations. What all this means is very little, if any, time at all for timed parking enforcement, which is of critical interest to the downtown merchants and residents. And minimal widespread proactive enforcement of almost all other violations. This would include all of the efforts on blocked sidewalk enforcement, wrong way parking enforcement. Uh, simply not much time to conduct those activities on a widespread basis. And so in the discussion here, we come to talk about a potential partnership with Laz Parking. Laz Parking has provided the police department with a proposal to deliver the following. And there's a couple of slides here to go over the different things that are a part of their current proposal. They will provide four full time parking enforcement officers, they call them PEOs, that would fill the role of our current CSOs in terms of parking enforcement. This will provide coverage Monday through Saturday from eight AM to six PM. Two to four parking enforcement officers working each day. It will ensure the later enforcement hours that were recommended in the two thousand nineteen report. And all of these PEOs will be equipped with TurboData Ticket Pro electronic citation writers. These are the citation writers we already use at the police department, so they are completely prepared to integrate with our standing existing systems. Additionally, Laz will provide citywide parking enforcement coverage to include responding to reported violations. Uh, timed parking enforcement, as we've been talking about a great deal this evening. Street sweeping enforcement and other saturated parking enforcement as directed by staff. Uh, parking complaints will also be routed to Laz. They will provide a dedicated phone number for complaints. They will also integrate with the San Bruno Responds app, what we, uh, at the city call a cella. And calls to the PD will be routed to Laz when they pertain to activities Laz has been contracted to provide. Also in this proposal, they will provide one project manager and one regional manager. They will provide four ALPR equipped parking enforcement vehicles. Laz will be responsible for all of the maintenance and the insurance on those vehicles. Uh, the ALPR system will be equipped to continually read parked vehicles to provide that drive by enforcement I previously described. And quite simply, the system will alert the PEO every time there's a vehicle that needs to be cited and they'll be able to take more swift action. Laz will also lease an office space within the city of San Bruno from which to conduct their operations. That will essentially be for, um, the supervisor to be housed, for employees to take breaks and to park and to come back to submit reports. Uh, this partnership with Laz will immediately enhance citywide parking enforcement, which was one of the components of the strategic initiative from, from council. Um, there will be regular, consistent patrols for a wide array of violations. And this will present us with the immediate ability to resume the time parking enforcement that has been so critical to these downtown businesses and residents. Enforcement of metered parking will be immediately available when installed with this partnership with Laz. Uh, again, metered parking cannot be implemented without a consistent ALPR based enforcement mechanism. Or the metering will not generate the adequate revenue and will not provide the benefits expected. Uh, Laz, this partnership with Laz will also provide us with the capability to manage and enforce permit parking programs. Which while there are no current permanent residential permit parking programs in place in the city. Um, this, again, the police department is charged with overseeing those and enforcement would be critical to them being effective when implemented. Some parking related activities will still need to be handled by CSOs and not by Laz Parking under this agreement. Mostly those requiring CLET clearance, meaning running any kind of registration records in the CLET databases. Um, mostly this will be registration violations, the seventy two hour parking ordinance, and there are a few others. It's also important again to note that CSOs again are essential to our day to day operations beyond parking. And as a result, this proposal, uh, maintains the existing CSO staffing levels. This is not a proposal to replace CSOs without source parking enforcement officers from Laz. So why Laz Parking? Uh, among the many reasons, a few that I can discuss here, one is that they are a national company with offices all over the United States. Reputable, they've been operating for a long time, and I think we can depend on them to be around as a long term partner. They're also a member of the National Cooperative Purchasing Alliance, which is to say that a competitive analysis of their services and the rates have been conducted. And they're accepted in a GSA. They are already active in our immediate area with excellent referrals. Uh, this includes San Mateo and Palo Alto, um, and a number of other agencies throughout the state of California who report wonderful results working with Laz. Uh, Laz is also capable of immediately integrating with existing PD systems, so we do not have to buy any new systems for the police department in order to work with them. And they have a great connection with multiple meter vendors, but among them is T two, which, uh, at present would be the vendor that if we were to come to council with a recommendation today would be the recommendation of staff. Uh, this provides some pricing, uh, benefits to us as well as some integration benefits. They are very flexible in, in terms of the scope and nature of enforcement. We get to direct their activities based on the needs of the city. And they are full use functional ALPR as they walk in the door here in San Bruno. Additionally, Laz has an approach that they call they're creating a culture of compliance, a fair and consistent parking enforcement approach that is aimed at. Increasing compliance over time because that is their ultimate goal. Uh, they're not so much revenue driven as they are driven by consist, the idea that consistent enforcement increases compliance, which increases quality of life in the corridor where they're enforcing. Um, they also provide a number of value added services to the community. They're listed here, I will not go through them one by one. But I will highlight one of critical importance to me as the police chief in San Bruno, which is that these are additional eyes and ears on the street for other criminal activity. Very, very important. Really, as I've discussed many times, policing flat out is a partnership between the community and the police department. We cannot be omnipresent, we cannot witness all crime, we cannot unfortunately be there to thwart all crime. But the more people we have out there operating as eyes and ears who will willingly report things to the police department when they see them and can function as good witnesses, the more effective we are as a department. This will deploy another two to four PEOs each day that are, uh, well trained to report properly to the police when they see activity that they should not take action on. Um, and in, in addition, I like the fact, I think Laz takes a very service oriented approach. They're focused on providing brochures, like we've done public education campaigns when we've queued up new enforcement here, like the sidewalk, the blocked sidewalk enforcement. Um, they're very good about getting out with that public outreach, they will participate in public meetings. Um, and provide this sort of all inclusive parking enforcement, uh, approach. Uh, briefly, an update on phase two, mostly because it becomes critically important to the next section, which is the fiscal sort of analysis of this project. A staff is still completing work for the second phase of this project, which is establishing metered parking downtown. We will certainly bring specific recommendations on phase two to council in a separate report when ready. Uh, and largely based upon your direction in terms of timing as, uh, we finish up tonight. Uh, the second phase will include but not be limited to creating and adopting a city ordinance. That will be necessary to authorize metered parking and its enforcement in the area and, and the fine amounts in the areas where we decide to put meters. Uh, it will include installing approximately eighty four T two Cosmo Pay stations kiosks for approximately eight hundred and thirty nine metered spaces. Uh, it will include deploying a cloud based meter and permit monitoring system. Developing a branded, uh, wayfinding and other signage design solution to ensure that we can direct people to the most available parking. And to ensure that we can enforce permitted park, or I'm sorry, metered parking. Because we have at least provided appropriate signage that you must pay in order to park, which is very important. Uh, it will include removing current timed parking signage and installing compliant signage. Installing branded wayfinding signage all over downtown. And it has an estimated implementation time of six to nine months from contract date. So just to bear in mind that from the day we decide to sort of pull the veritable trigger on metered parking downtown and sign a contract with a vendor. I think we're still looking at a minimum of six to nine months for installation. Uh, staff has worked very hard to identify a vendor that has relatively minimal installation requirements. They really vary a great deal, specifically in an effort to create a shorter turnaround time to get meters installed when council makes a decision about direction in that regard. So also the report tonight requests or suggests, recommends establishing a parking fund. Uh, the reason for this is that we identified it as a critical component to both phase one and phase two. First, it will enable the city to fund the initial costs of entering into this contract with Laz in phase one. Which is obviously important. Uh, also, it will create a location for the funds that are required to purchase and install meters for phase two when that action is undertaken. And perhaps most importantly, it establishes a location for the deposit of the ongoing revenues associated with both phases of this program. Which is, is to say the enforcement, uh, citation fees. As well as the revenues associated with the metering itself and the paying of, of the meters. Um, this will enable you to support the ongoing costs of the program. Uh, it will make for easier accounting in terms of looking at the fiscal impacts of the program as a whole over time. And it will establish a potential source to fund other initiatives as identified by council from the revenues generated through this program. Briefly to discuss police unit meet and confer. Um, I'm not going to read through the entire slide, but suffice it to say that as we discuss the potential of modifying. Existing, uh, city services through contracting or subcontracting, it creates the need to meet and confer. It's important to make the distinction between meet and confer and meet and agree. Which is to say that the city has a burden to get together in good faith with the union, discuss the perceived or the proposed changes. And hopefully, uh, arrive at a mutually, uh, beneficial solution. But it does not compel either party to actually agree to the terms. It is just to meet and make sure that these items are discussed prior to moving forward with them. Um, I will tell you that I have met directly with the San Bruno Police Association President, Tony Perkins. I shared all the details of this proposal with him. He then took the details back to the membership, which includes community service officers, obviously the group most impacted by this decision. And the San Bruno Police Association adamantly supports this proposal. I think that is largely because it does not involve the elimination of any staff positions and in fact will afford more time for CSOs to support the critical activities of police officers. And therefore it is endorsed currently by the police association. I do know that, um, the association president communicated this to Teamsters. And that there will eventually be a communication that qualifies as meet and confer between the city and Teamsters that has not yet occurred. But Human Resources is committed to completing that process. Uh, I can also tell you that the association president is attending the meeting on Zoom and is willing to make himself available in the event that there are any concerns over whether or not there is approval of moving forward with this proposal. So now to the fiscal impact. Laz contracted costs, so we're currently looking at a five year contract with Laz. At an estimated total of a little over two point nine million over that five year period. It's the average monthly cost of a little over forty eight thousand dollars for the Laz services, all encompassing. So enforcement, equipment, maintenance, staffing, uh, everything that I presented to you earlier is covered in this proposed amount. Those fees are paid to Laz on a monthly basis. And this chart on this slide, um, helps to show the anticipated monthly and annual costs over the five years of the contract. Uh, really just illustrating what I previously stated. So the first question, right, is what can offset some of these expenses? And the first thought is citation revenues can. I think that it's important to note that over the past five years, the city, the police department has averaged a little under fifty five thousand dollars per month in citation revenues. So when you look back at the previous slide and you see what the projected monthly costs are from Laz and you look at fifty five thousand of revenue. It looks like this is relatively cost neutral right out of the gate. However, I think it's important to note that those revenues are already accounted for and encumbered in the police department budget. And so I think it would be poor accounting practice to account for those as a way to fund this program. Um, but there should be a substantial increase in revenue from citations. Associated with the enhanced enforcement that will come with a contract with Laz. Quite frankly, this will be based a lot upon our current enforcement posture, which we'll talk about in a moment. And its difference, uh, to what enforcement posture will look like with a contract with Laz. So Laz Parking does a brief analysis of seven contracted locations in California. And they experienced first year increases in citation revenues of between forty five percent and a hundred and thirty percent. And this is a huge, you know, gap to look at, uh, well, is it going to be forty five percent or a hundred and thirty percent, which I certainly understand. But again, that's largely based on the difference between the current enforcement postures and the different cities that employ Laz's services. As I illustrated earlier, the current enforcement practices in San Bruno are very minimal. So I would tend to think that we will be towards the higher end of that revenue increase. Um, but nonetheless, we will use relatively conservative figures in the fact, in what I'm going to show you here this evening. Um, they also state that we should experience a forty to fifty percent increase in subsequent years. So the first year you'll see a spike because there's enforcement where there hasn't been in the past. And then over that period of time, you will typically begin to see greater and greater levels of compliance. And so the citation revenues will tend to shrink over the period, uh, over the five year period of the, the contract. Uh, but because the enforcement is so much more consistent and effective and efficient than what we've done in the past, we should see sustained increases in that forty to fifty percent margin. Of course, it is impossible to predict exact revenues, period. Uh, what I'm trying to do this evening is to present to you what we think are some reasonable proposals or some reasonable estimates. So that you can make as educated as a decision, of a decision about this matter as possible. So this chart provides a little bit of a, a conservative but a reasonable projection of. Uh, increased citation revenue expectations against the estimated monthly cost of the program, phase one of the program, I should say, over the five year contract term. And what you see here at the far right is that in the first year, we expect a net positive, again, because there's a big spike in increased revenues due to the spike in enforcement. And as we drop from that big increase year one to this forty to fifty percent increase in years two through five. We see the revenues decrease, but the costs continue. And so we see that a net negative or a cost to the city to maintain this program. Again, this is not accounting for the existing fifty five thousand dollars of monthly revenue and citations, uh, in citation revenue, I'm sorry, because those are again already encumbered. Uh, so this next slide will demonstrate that, um. The average cost each year to the city, if there's no additional revenue sources beyond what's projected here is about twenty two thousand dollars. Um, given the current enforcement levels, again, I do believe that these projections are notably low, but again, we are attempting to be relatively conservative. Coming into the city of San Bruno with a very low level of enforcement and immediately ratcheting up to citywide parking enforcement for a variety of violations. And restarting time parking enforcement on day one should produce very substantial increases in citation revenue. I think it's important, however, to look at the program as a whole. Because ultimately, as council, you'll be tasked with, with the entire program, meaning phase one of enhanced enforcement and phase two of, of installing meters. And when both phases are complete, staff expects substantial net positive revenues for the city. Uh, there will be an initial capital improvement expense to install the meters, of course, which we currently estimated about one million dollars. Parking meters are expected to generate substantial revenue for the city. A survey of other cities shows between two hundred and twenty five dollars per month and three hundred and nine dollars per month per metered space. Again, there are eight hundred and thirty nine proposed metered spaces within the area that we're currently looking at. Which should provide between a hundred and eighty eight thousand and change and two hundred and fifty nine thousand and change of revenue per month from the meters. That's, uh, between two That's between two point six million and three point one million annually. Now, again, these projections are based on survey averages only, and it really is unknown at this point in time how they'll compare to what will actually happen in San Bruno. There are a number of moving parts still that will come before council, like the rates that we choose to charge for the different metering areas. And all of those circumstances will have an effect on what these revenues are. And we'll set, attempt to set some context here. So the annual fiscal impact of this program, using the median of the estimated meter revenue range in the previous slide, would be about two point six million positive for the city per year. Again, in year one here, we're estimating zero metering revenue because it will take probably at least that year to get the meters installed. So when you look at this chart, you see no meter revenue in year one, but still a net fiscal impact positive due to the spike in enforcement. And in the subsequent years, you see this infusion of metering revenue, which helps to offset the complete picture in terms of fiscal impact and make it a significant net positive. Approximately nine point five million in gain over the five-year term based on the low end of the numbers that I just presented to you in terms of the revenue per meter per month with eight hundred and thirty-nine spaces. Of course, you'll have to ultimately less the estimated cost of purchasing and installing those meters, which again is presently estimated at about one million dollars for a net gain of about eight point five million over a five-year period. Of course, the million dollar question, or maybe several million dollar question here is, well, what if the meter revenues in San Bruno are less than those surveyed estimates? Which certainly is possible. So what I've done with this particular slide is said, how much less? Do we think we might be fifty percent less in revenues than what the surveyed seven cities were? In which case, you can see the numbers here in terms of the net fiscal gains, which I only included for years two through five, because again, we're projecting no revenue in year one. And you're still looking at right around a million dollars of positive revenue for the city per year when phase one and phase two are both implemented in this program. So it will enable us to significantly enhance parking enforcement, hopefully resolve a number of the parking issues in that area, and still create a new revenue stream for the city. Going even further, let's presume that we could only generate about twenty-five percent of what the surveyed cities generated. So seventy-five percent reduction over the surveyed groups, accounting for all the proposed costs, we're still looking at between three and four hundred thousand dollars per year net positive with phase one and phase two implemented in this program. Briefly, let's talk about the importance of phase two. As has been illustrated here, for the long-term fiscal viability of the contract with Laz, we need phase two, we need the metering revenue. And so I think it's important to understand that these proposals account for that revenue kicking in in year two. And for that to happen, we would have to move forward relatively quickly with getting meters. We're looking at six to nine months for installation. And so if staff doesn't bring back to council relatively soon after any action on the Laz contract, action to install and begin metering, we will not have that revenue to offset these expenses. So staff is sensitive to how important that is, and we are prepared to initiate phase two. An additional appropriation will be required to do so. I think that's part of a larger discussion that was alluded to earlier this evening regarding some of the spending of development revenues. And when this appropriation is made, we will be ready to begin. Phase one is being recommended prior to phase two, again, based largely upon council's prior recommendations, public sentiment, and the desire to try and address the mounting parking enforcement problem as quickly and as effectively as possible. So moving forward with phase two, what does it look like? About, again, about eight hundred and thirty-nine spaces. That includes all of the current timed parking restricted zones in the downtown corridor and all of the public parking lots, as well as the city hall lot. One stretch that often gets overlooked that is time parking restricted is the stretch of El Camino from Crystal Springs all the way down to Canes. This will include that stretch. And the metering would be paid by plate, not by space. There would be approximately eighty-two kiosks needed in order to meet industry standards for not having to walk too far from your parking space in order to pay. The city would own these kiosks. The expected lifespan of those kiosks is ten to fifteen years. The contract would include spare parts and service from the vendor. Residents are able to pay with cash, card, or via an application on their smartphone. Parking rates by zone would be determined by council with staff recommendations as part of action we'd bring to you later. And compliance signage would be another key required component. Council will also have to approve a new city ordinance just to authorize the metering and to authorize enforcement of new sections based upon metering, which again, staff is prepared to bring before you. Funding of the startup parking fund. So I alluded to earlier the desire to create a parking fund to track not only the expenditures, but the revenues that come in through this program. How are we going to fund it? Well, there is an existing CIP, a capital improvement project for the downtown parking program. A city council has previously allocated three hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars to that fund. Those funds were from a Centrum settlement, I'm sorry, which I believe pertained to some impacts created by the FedEx site that is actually in South San Francisco on San Mateo Avenue, but which impacts San Bruno, obviously. Use of those funds, I'm told from our finance director, are unrestricted. So we are able to use them for however council sees fit. A staff is recommending the transfer of that three hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars in the CIP into the newly established parking fund. This is in an effort to cover the expenses expected in fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three associated with possibly executing this contract with Laz. Increased citation revenues are likely to offset the entirety of this expense in year one, as I've previously illustrated. But those funds are deposited not in real time, right? We realize those over time as we continue to issue citations and folks continue to pay those citation fees. And so it's important to fund an account that ensures that we are viable for at least the first year of this contract with Laz. Staff will recommend further appropriations in fiscal years in the future, certainly in twenty-three, twenty-four, and hopefully those will be based on real numbers. At that point in time, we'll actually be able to look at the increased citation revenues. We'll have a proposal before you regarding the meters. I think you'll have a much bigger picture with which to make some of these decisions. So in closing summary, the downtown parking study called for enhanced parking enforcement in meters. City council prioritized these items as strategic initiatives. Council has requested that staff develop a plan to improve parking enforcement in the immediate based on the substantial need in the immediate. The PD has developed a two-phased approach in response to a desire for that better enforcement, and existing CSO staffing levels cannot provide the desired level of enforcement. So expanding CSO staffing is also not a particularly viable solution because it's costly, and as I described earlier, it is difficult. A contract partnership with Laz will provide the immediate enhancement that is desired, as well as critical capabilities for meter enforcement and enforcement of permit parking programs in the future. There is a funding source available to start this program. Additional funding will be required for phase two, the installation of meters. Phase two revenues will be critical to the long-term fiscal viability of this plan. If meter revenues are not realized, phase one is not expected to be cost neutral and will need to be funded from elsewhere. And establishing a parking fund will enable council to monitor and appropriate citation and meter revenues as it sees fit. So the recommendation of staff, is it okay for me to say as read by the city clerk? I'm pretty sure I'll stumble all over this one, but as read by the city clerk as the action. In terms of alternatives, certainly council can take no action and we can pause phase one of this project until the implementation of meters in phase two. You can also direct us not to execute a contract with Laz and instead to identify an alternative vendor or to consider a staffing plan to bring this in-house following the conclusion of the meet and confer process. You can also opt to take no action and continue the limited parking enforcement as it stands with the available CSOs in the police department, where you certainly could request additional information from staff prior to taking any action. So that concludes my presentation and, of course, happy to address any questions that I can.
Thank you, chief, for the presentation, the detail. And at this time, I'll bring it to council for questions on the presentation. And first, we'll start with council member Hamilton.
Thank you, thank you, chief, for the presentation. Very, very detailed, as usual. I have just a few questions. I'm assuming that we haven't heard any rumblings of any Fourth Amendment issues with the use of license plate readers? Obviously, because if there were, that would be a huge problem for all of this.
No, it's an interesting question, however, because one of the Ninth Circuit's statements in this recent ruling is that one of the problems they have with the Sixth Circuit's findings on chalking tires is that it tends to encourage mechanisms that are seen as even more intrusive. And I would think that they're alluding to technology like license plate reading. However, ALPR technology is not new. It's been in widespread use for a long time, and we use it in other aspects in the city and have for many, many years. And the standing legal finding on it is that it is doing nothing more than observing something in the public right-of-way, and as such, is not protected under the Fourth Amendment. The finding on chalking had to do with the sort of seizure that gets added or attached when you're touching the vehicle by chalking it.
Got it, okay, thank you. So regarding wayfinding signage, it's obvious that this is a critical part of the meter program. But considering that that's going to come at a later stage, that's likely more than a year away, given that once we even approve stage two, there would be a six to nine-month lead time for the meters. Is it possible for us to do a much simpler wayfinding sign project just to increase the visibility of our existing lots today? Because I repeatedly hear stories of folks who drive down San Mateo Avenue, find no parking, and leave because they have no idea that there's lots just steps away on Mastick or in the other city lots. There are existing signs, but they're really not sufficient. And I know that the, you know, the permanent signs that we would get at the end of the project at phase two would be more elaborate because they're going to have to have all the meter information on them. But just some simple parking and parking signs with arrows in better places than we have them today and replacements of other ones that are probably missing, is that a possibility? And that might not be a PD question.
Sure, I'll take that, council member Hamilton.
City manager?
Yes. So the parking enforcement portion of this project is being operated by the police department. Installing and designing and managing wayfinding is being handled out of our public works department. So I can't provide an answer to you tonight on that question. It definitely deals with resource allocation of personnel to advance that project. And so I understand the question, unfortunately. I don't want to say offhand that we can certainly advance that at this point.
Okay, just before I go to my third question, the camera's off for the room, at least for me. So just, I can hear everybody just fine, but there's no, I'm not seeing any of you. And then, so my last question is, understanding that it's going to take time to execute the agreement and for Laz to be ready to provide services for San Bruno, if this were to be approved tonight, what is a reasonable date to expect that we would see Laz's staff on the street?
Also, a good question. I think that the benefit, one of the benefits of working with Laz is that they have a presence in the area already. We've, they have alluded to being able to staff almost immediately at least two of the four positions. From there, it will probably be phased in to a large degree, so the enforcement will sort of ramp up over time. But the turnaround times they're suggesting to us are more in that ninety-day timeline, not in, you know, years. And that is what's been experienced in both San Mateo and Palo Alto, that the ramp up was quicker than they expected. It will probably take a little bit longer for some of the infrastructure pieces, like for them to get an office space in San Bruno and to queue up some of those moving parts. But again, because the integrations are already in place for the systems we're using at the PD, it should be relatively seamless to queue them up. So it will be about acquiring vehicles and making sure they have the staff to route over here.
Okay, thank you. I have some other comments, but those are comments and not questions, so I will stop for now. And I can see everybody again, thank you.
Thank you, council member Hamilton. Other questions from colleagues on the presentation? Council member Salazar?
Thank you. That were made in the initial report, and so that definitely helps, I think, even if the program. One question I had was, in creating the separate fund for the revenue goes into this pool, wouldn't that leave a half a million?
Mentally, it does for sure. I think there is some policy consists of substantial enforcement activity by communities. Those are all reasonable questions that are probably better under the direction from a finance director or the city manager than the police chief.
Absolutely. Council member Salazar, so the police department's budget for twenty-two, twenty-three. On a go-forward basis with phase two, allows for better tracking. Now, at a budgetary time, given that the program is projected to be cash positive, if there is net positive revenue in there, council would allocate, police department uses, would be one of the allocations out of the parking fund each year, but there would be net pop fund so we can have a better accounting.
Yeah, but it does impact the analysis in that, in ticket revenue that's going to come in because we're now consolidating it. It's actually, even if we decide later to reallocate it back to the PD, existing half a million plus a quarter million delta, make sure I understood that. Also?
Yes.
And would that mean then that our employees?
City staff have existing parking permits to park in those lots, the various city lots? Those would still be good during?
And again, those are the kind of assumptions that I was concerned about when we have those meters occupied for about nine hours a day, every day of, I guess, that low watermark so that we know where we might end up. And I noticed that in the proposal from Laz, they included equipment cost for the license plate readers. So I'm wondering, is that a cost that we would incur, or do they?
Over the five years, we would be paying for them. At the end of the five-year term, they have a one-dollar buyback program. Sir, that estimate of monthly cost is intended to be all-inclusive of equipment, personnel, everything that we expect to have to write a check to Laz for.
First option, where we sort of time all of this together so that we're not running a period of time where we're potentially losing money and if we plan on doing it all and start generating that revenue stream that we'll need to offset the cost.
Are there questions from colleagues on the presentation?
The merchants and hearing staff talk about it in the?
Are we talking about time parking enforcement?
Yeah, and I figure out, because that city parking lot, I'm trying to figure out, like, who really parks there? Like, I know the residents park there, but it's not close. The rate was determined by an average of, clearly, when we roll out the info without being told in advance, we're going to have a pretty extensive five years, but we can get out after the first year, just curious of what the flexibility of?
That's unfortunately a question we did anticipate, but which I'm not prepared to answer this evening, report, but the more fine?
Will not only provide revenue, but it's something, I know we've talked about, restaurants currently are getting a lot of business by, in front of the restaurants, if I'm, to have the parking meters there. I think, I think a while back, there's the potential to bond off of the revenue. I think I heard that our downtown, I'm sure that everybody is moving, and I thank you for all the work behind this.
We approving a contract that's not substantially final tonight? Are we being asked to approve a contract that's not substantially final tonight? Or will that come back to the council at a later time?
Back then, we would, with your authorization, there are still some contract terms that need to be signed, and we would negotiate that contract. And with approval from the city manager, we can certainly bring that contract back. But what the city council typically does with your contracts is you authorize the city manager to enter to multiple other vendors, although not in a formal process. And it became abundantly clear pretty quickly that Laz was the one that could provide all of the needs.
So you're piggybacking off the fact that it's already been procured through another government entity?
Correct.
Okay, that makes sense. And then, let me just be clear then, if there was no RFP in the discussions, is up for discussion? Or is that?
My dealings with Laz, that everything's up for negotiation. When we looked at different terms, the five-year was, and basing it on the lifespan of those vehicles and the equipment that gets purchased. But no, I think if there's a desire to discuss a shorter?
In this process, and while I have been following San Mateo's, it's been in the newspaper, that I think when they first initiated this, then again, and, you know, up to five years, for example. City, we just did this with Recology where there was a four-to-one vote for a position that also had not been entered in a program at this point. That also has not really begun the meet and confer process, if I'm reading between the lines and the staffer being. But there hasn't been an actual meet and confer yet, correct?
I think maybe it being said, the approval by the membership body has been conveyed to Teamsters, and they have reconveyed that they're not going to contest based upon the wishes of that particular bargaining unit that says, we want to move forward with this. Authorization pending completion of that meet and confer process? Authorization pending completion of that meet and confer process, or enter into the contract without concluding that meet and confer process.
Was the union invited to tonight's meeting? And I just want a clarification, there was, so I would just go back to a hesitation. I think once, I'm wondering, you're in established, I wouldn't ask for the pre-Teamster partners, especially considering the fact that we just approved a 20-year contract, really with no meet and confer process. So I do have some serious concerns about that and around the conversations that have been had. You talked about Phase One and Phase Two, but what has been done, what has been tried up till now internally?
Self, to be honest, it's been a long process of trying a number of things, from public, issuing warnings, done on an overtime basis by police officers and by community service. The reality is that the level of enforcement desired and needed to produce the results simply?
I'm not sure if any of the council members have questions, but I would request a continuance of the item to the fervently, obviously, support. Would be nice to know, because they do represent our employees here in San Bruno, but I don't want to walk all over the relationships and the partnerships that have taken a long time to grow. So, thank you.
Again, just, I knew it's sweeping out of the contract, and not even has that as a viable option. And it's not news. So it's important also to me, and I appreciate that, but I know that you, what I'm hearing you say is, yes, we invited the Teamsters, they're muted, hence it's pending for that to occur, coming back to council, and then?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor Medina. A meet and agree typically will require with the union on a whole host of operational matters that never come before, various actions that will require a meet and confer. And before staff, it's a little step further in that meet and confer, which is already required per the MLU. And so I do think that it's important, just, should you want to do that, you can certainly say, you know, we'd like the meet and confer to happen, but that process has been concluded before providing the authorization. Either way, it has to happen because it's a requirement.
Right, and I think the chief was clear, it's a meet and confer, not meet and agree. And so you've made that a couple times, so I'm very familiar.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just add some clarification to, I don't mean to imply that my meeting with the police association president with Teamsters and the POA is so good, is because the way that dynamic works. I enjoy a very productive relationship with the police association, and the police association is with this dialogue between police administration and the police association president. If the association president demonstrates that he has concerns, or that their ship is in support of an initiative, I think it's reasonable to expect support from Teamsters, because their job is to represent that membership.
Presidents, and then work on that, and that's how you build trust. Any other questions at this?
Paul Wapinski?
Thank you.
Paul Wapinski, whenever you're ready, you may begin.
Good evening. I just have a couple of questions. With the license plate readers, how are they going to read disabled placards if they have a placard instead of a disabled license plate? The second thing is, who's going to retain, or will the San Bruno Police Department retain the authority to tow cars, or will this contractor be able to do that if they violate the law? Or if cars are parked in violation of the law? And then, I may have missed this, but what is the difference between a kiosk and a meter? And who is responsible for the maintenance and operation of the meters? So there's got to be expenses as far as credit card services, coin collection, coin counting, et cetera. I didn't see that in the brief. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, please.
No other hands are raised.
Thank you very much. We'll bring it back to the council. And I'm going to ask, because I think that, or summarize, I think the last speaker had some good clarifying questions, and I can sense the chief agrees, and so, if you don't mind, I think we kind of heard about ADA.
Apologies, Mayor Medina. One hand did go up, if we can.
Absolutely, if they've been with us, and this is important, we want to hear from them. Yes, please. Thank you.
I will be bringing in Bridget. Bridget, whenever you're ready, you may begin.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. So I have just a couple of questions. I think that the meters in downtown are a good thing, but my questions are in regards to the ALPR readers. If they, if the LAS company is not cleared for cuts, what info are they actually able to see in regards to our vehicle information? My second question is, what's the retention in regards to the data that they are collecting from the ALPR readers? Is that information that the city keeps, that LAS keeps, or is that deleted after a short period of time? My also, my third question is, what happens to LAS if they don't have proper minimum staffing for the day? Is there, is there financial repercussions for them because we are losing revenue due to ticketing throughout the meter parking areas? And then, my last question is in regards to if there is double parking because people don't want to pay for the meters? Are they able to ticket in the street for things like the DoorDash, who are coming and going within a matter of a couple minutes? Hopefully, LAS will be kind of sitting around the corner, able to watch some of these drivers, and so are they able to ticket for those type of actions? And actually, I have one other question in regards to the LAS representative's safety. What is their form of communication with the police department? If they have issues dealing with people while they are trying to ticket, are they having to call into 911, or do they have radio communication through our police department so we can get help for them in a quick amount of time? That's all. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Just wanted to double-check if there's any more speakers?
No other hands are raised.
Thank you very much. And I'm sorry, put that back on you, but there were some questions that were raised, and if you don't mind?
Yeah, but I might have to have you walk me back through some of them, there were quite a few. The last speaker, first, I can speak to some of the ALPR questions. So there was a question from Mr. Wapinski, I think, about disabled placards and plates. So the ALPR technology can determine if there's a disabled designation on a license plate, it obviously can't and doesn't read for placards and windows. It's not typically used for enforcement of handicap parking. There is still a mechanism here where there's a human being that issues a citation. So if the concern here is that a LAS parking enforcement officer might drive by a vehicle that is parked in a handicap stall, and that the license plate reader made the handicap spot. Now, where it can come into play is with the handicap placard in the state of California, you can essentially park anywhere except where parking is prohibited. So that's where the human element comes in, the PEO has to get out and issue the citation if they see a placard, they know not to issue a license plates. It is a technology that essentially takes parking enforcement, it's simply reading that plate once as it goes by, and then reading it each time the off station, it's not providing any kind of records, and no such data has ever run in association with ALPR, nor is it retained, will by the police department, and then automatically purged. So I think that?
The towing of the cars, is it still requires somebody else to have to come in to take care of that?
Data, to make sure that everything's in order with that tow. So those will, however, double parking is a real problem downtown, as we all know, a separate section besides the parking violation, and we would tend to lean towards the latter because it's a better enforcement mechanism to gain. Or a parking enforcement officer would need to be issued by a police officer, coupled with the fact that those interactions are often going to involve actually contacting a person. If there's a driver in that car, they will have radio access, so they will be able to communicate directly with police dispatch immediately in the event that they need help, or, as I mentioned earlier, in the event that they witness something occurring out in the community that requires.
Businesses, how would their parking, would they be charged a parking permit fee? How would?
Things based on the input from the merchants that we'll bring to you, or what are the permit considerations for if council directs us to do, right? We can provide a certain number of permits based on license for every hour. We'll bring a number of alternatives before you so that you can give proper direction.
And also, I think, just as far as the, I knew it every year, because it'll ensure that they're making their payments, because they're going to want?
Real quick, the only thing is, I know you talked about the city hall downtown. Well, if those monies are to take care of where these items are, or the resources from council?
For the mayor?
Oh, thank you. Council member Hamilton?
So, yeah, I just have a comment. I'm very, very pleased to see this come back before us, and it reinforces my, the decision to focus first on enhanced enforcement. First, given that a large percentage of the problems that we're seeing downtown can be addressed with enforcement, including double parking, including, you know, especially by the delivery service drivers, and also, this with cars being parked on San Mateo Avenue all day, or even several days at a time. This program, both the Phase One that we're being asked to approve tonight, and the Phase Two metering, it goes directly to the goals that were laid out by the downtown parking program that was approved by city council, and it's ultimately going to generate, you know, very desperately needed revenue for San Bruno. So for all these reasons, I am in favor of adopting this resolution.
Any other last comments from council? Vice mayor Mason?
Yeah, I guess, I'm just wondering if there's an appetite for continuing the item until there is the meet and confer with the unions? I'm not sure, I guess it's a question for the city attorney if I need to motion for a continuance. Can you repeat that? You want to? Whether I should motion for a continuance to see if there's support from the council to bring the item back in December, after there's been at least a meet and confer with the?
City manager?
Sure. I understand that there's a desire to continue the item to the next regularly, I don't know that the meeting process could actually occur and be concluded by December 13th, there's a number of, it's certain, but instead, just direct staff to come back after the meet and confer process, if that's your desire.
Mr. Mayor?
Oh, wait, hold on. City attorney?
I just wanted to clarify that whenever the meet and confer is complete.
Let's see where we are. Understanding that the meet and confer process will likely not have concluded by then, but just an update.
Please?
Council member Hamilton?
Aye.
Council member Marty Medina?
Aye.
Council member Salazar?
Aye.
Vice mayor Mason?
Aye.
Mayor Rico Medina?
Aye.
What else needs to be done at this time? Again, thank you for the very well-prepared, make it clear that you're reaching out to the association and working collaboratively. And council member Hamilton, do you have anything?
The only thing I've got is just, I want to thank staff for setting all the extra stuff up for me on Zoom tonight. I appreciate it. I would have rather been there in person than being here, hitting mute while reaching for my tissues. So, thank you. Thank you to staff for supporting me, being able to attend remotely. Thank you.
Vice mayor?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask whether staff has any updates on the crossing guard discussion we had at the last, maybe? Has it, I don't know if it's been already two meetings, but if there's any updates on that?
No updates at this time.
And then, just that, as a city, we can really do a better job in streamlining our business license issuance process. I'm hearing significant complaints about the delays and hold events downtown, like flea markets, where surrounding small businesses will have traffic that they may not have on a regular day. I hope we look at the broader picture and not just encouraging people to shop downtown. Thank you.
Thank you all. I just, I'll try to keep this quick, but I wanted to let it know that the Cap Girl volleyball team had an amazing season, and won three sets. In the semifinals, they fell a little short, but however, they won the Ocean Division League Championship, and it is the first time in a long time that that has happened. And I'm trying to hope that I wouldn't lose the bet against the city of Millbrae and Mills. Time to my colleagues, Mr. Council member Hamilton, and to the staff, and with that...